Good evening. Pastor Pete, would you please come forward and pray for us? You'll have to grab a hold of the microphone or something. It's turned around tonight. For our large audience.
But y'all showed up.
We did.
Thank you for showing up here tonight. Father, thank you for the beautiful weather. We just, we got a lot to be thankful for. We do thank you for the, the growth of our city, and we thank for the ones who are in leadership. And I'm not sure if we're going to get to see the accomplishments of the young people, but you have really blessed our, our schools in so many different ways. And we do ask you to continue to do that. And also, the, you know, the works in the city. And we think about our different departments. We think about our businesses. And thank you for the, the road work that's getting done and just a lot of things happening. And we've got, you know, plan, planning ahead. We think about the skillet days and, and other events that's coming up this year and the end of summer and fall. And we just, preparation, I know that they're working on them now and just give them guidance. And even their meeting tonight, we pray that you would give them wisdom and ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call the June 23rd, 2025 Board of Alder Women Meeting to order. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Rachel Kilmer.
Here.
Tracy Newcomer.
Here.
Pam Pope.
Here.
Sierra McMichael.
Here.
Melissa Johnson. Kelly Neto.
Here.
And Mayor Dana Webb.
Here. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is new business deletions or continuances to the agenda. We do not have any of those this evening, so we will move on to public comments. City Clerk, do we have any?
There are none.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. These items are, these items are considered on the consent agenda so that members of the Board of Alder Women by unanimous consent can designate routine items to be approved by one motion. Tonight, we have approval of the June 2nd, 2025 Board of Alder Women Meeting minutes, expenditures through June 18th, 2025, and the May 2025 financial statement.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We do not have any unfinished business this evening, so we will move on to new business. So there's no one here for our presentation, so I, if anybody shows up, we'll just do it at the end. And we will reschedule. Moving on to the next item, it'd be a presentation, it's recognizing Detective Phil Griffin. So I have something to read. At the Missouri Investigators Conference held last month in Springfield, Detective Phil Griffin was recognized as one of the several outstanding investigators of the year. Detective Griffin received his recognition along with others associated to a series of robberies investigated across Missouri committed by three individuals traveling together. Working together, the detectives involved were able to identify and charge the subjects with multiple offenses in several different counties, leading to prison time for each. Detective Griffin was unable to attend the conference in May due to summer vacation plans. Much like this evening's meeting, he is also out of town and not able to be here to be recognized. So Chief is going to recognize him in their monthly meeting, and he'll get a proclamation and then one of the service coins. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the proposed revisions for Chapter 405 of the City Code of the City of Oak Grove, Missouri regarding R1 Single Family District Regulations. Mr. Randall?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this has been before the board a couple of times. It's gone to the Planning and Zoning Commission multiple times as well. So I know that you have seen this, but I do think it's important to summarize the meetings that have taken place as well as establishing a framework of what the city's land use and zoning regulations are. So the city's original zoning ordinance was adopted back in 1962, and it established the land use regulations for single-family, multifamily, business and industrial areas. And each of those had compatible uses identified with, in each zone. In 1996, the city adopted a subdivision development ordinance to regulate the division of land and installation of public infrastructure related to those subdivisions. In 2000, the city began the process of crafting what's called a Unified Development Code, or UDC, to consolidate and modernize our land use regulations by combining both that previous zoning ordinance as well as the subdivision development regulations into a comprehensive UDC to modernize and also provide a consistent framework for land use zoning and property development standards. Now, the UDC defines the city's base zoning districts, which determine the type of uses permitted in a specific area. Typically, you know, you might think of residential areas or commercial areas or industrial areas. Those districts also have a set of minimum development standards for each lot. Those include, you know, minimum, maximum, or minimum lot sizes, building heights, maximum building heights, width setbacks to ensure orderly development and compatible development within the city. Importantly, it's important to note that the UDC is designed to be reviewed and updated periodically. This allows the city to respond to evolving local and national trends and to maintain clear and effective set of development standards and support the community's planning and development needs. So to that end, in February of this year, the Board of Alder Women, you held a land use zoning and planning work session to discuss key components of the UDC, particularly with focus on the R1 zoning districts, lot size, lot width, and setback requirements. So following that discussion, the Board requested that you bring it back to a regular session, and that happened on April 7th. At the April 7th meeting, you referred the matter to Planning and Zoning Commission for further evaluation and recommendation. Planning and Zoning Commission then held the meeting on April 15th and reviewed the city's existing standards and recommended modifications to the R1 development standards for single-family homes. At your May 5th meeting, you reviewed the commission's recommendations and directed staff at that time to initiate the formal process of amending the Unified Development Code, incorporating the proposed changes from the Planning Commission, but excluding their recommendation to add a minimum lot depth to R1. So this started the formal process, which included public notifications and public hearings. As part of that process, the Planning Commission held a public hearing at their June 3rd meeting to gather input on the proposed changes to R1 lot regulations. After their review and consideration, the commission recommended approval of the proposed amendments to reduce R1 lot size to 7,500 square feet from its current 9,000 square feet, reducing rear setback to 25 feet from 30. That matches the 25 setback of the front, and reducing minimum lot width from 75 feet to 65 feet. Those proposed revisions are reflected in the ordinance before the board tonight to amend Sections 405.155 and 405.225 of the UDC. In your, in the ordinance, you can see the red strike through is the deletion of existing language and double underline is the addition of those changes. Staff has reviews, reviewed the proposed revisions and found that they're consistent with the intent of the Development Code, which aims to promote the orderly growth of the city, reduce unnecessary regulatory barriers, ensure zoning regulations adapt to the involving needs of the community, as well as to current development practices. By aligning the R1 minimum lot standards more closely with those of our peer cities and actual market demand, the revisions support more efficient land use. This approach encourages a more diverse housing stock and promotes land efficiency, ultimately improving housing affordability, which is one of the key goals identified in the comprehensive plan. So potential actions for the board tonight would be to approve the proposed revisions via the ordinance, deny the proposed revisions, or direct staff to bring back a revised ordinance at a future meeting. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Does the board have any questions at this time for city staff? Members of the public who wish to testify on behalf of the R1 Single Family District Regulations, please come forward at this time, state your name and address, and direct your questions to me. I now open the public hearing. I now close the public hearing. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action for Bill Number 2507 regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 405 of the Unified Development Code, Section 405, for Single Family District Regulations. So this is an ordinance.
I move for first and second reading by title only of Bill Number 25-07.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for the first and second reading of the proposed ordinance of Bill Number 2507 by title only. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. City Clerk, would you please read the full title of the bill two times?
An ordinance amending Chapter 405 of the Unified Development Code, Sections 405.155, Single Family District Regulations, and 405.225, Zoning District Property Development Standards, Measurements and Computations of the Municipal Code of the City of Oak Grove, Missouri Regarding R1 Development Standards. An ordinance amending Chapter 405 of the Unified Development Code, Sections 405.155, Single Family District Regulations, and 405.225, Zoning District Property Development Standards, Measurements and Computations of the Municipal Code of the City of Oak Grove, Missouri Regarding R1 Development Standards.
I move for adoption of Bill Number 25-07.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of Bill Number 2507 to ordinance. Any discussion? City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Rachel Kilmer.
Yes.
Tracy Newcomer.
Yes.
Pam Pope.
Yes.
Sierra McMichael.
Yes.
Kelly Neto.
Yes.
The motion is approved, and Bill Number 2507 becomes ordinance number 2134 and is adopted. I want to pause at this time and thank all of you for your hard work that you put in for this to go through. And the Planning and Zoning did a fantastic job of this, just thinking that we changed, that you all took the time to change this is pretty remarkable. So, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the proposed revisions to Chapter 405 of the City Code for the City of Oak Grove, Missouri Regarding Accessory Dwelling Units, ADUs. Matt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this one is a rather lengthy ordinance with, with a lot of components to it. So please bear with me as we, as I walk through the proposed ADU ordinance. So during those same meetings that I previously talked about for, regarding the R1 development standards, the Board of Alder Women and the Planning and Zoning Commission also discussed at those meetings reviewing allowable residential accessory uses, more specifically, the inclusion of accessory dwelling units as an allowable residential accessory use. So on that May 5th Board of Alder Women meeting, you all reviewed the commission's recommendations and directed staff at that time to initiate the formal process to amend the UDC to allow ADUs subject to specific standards. And the board also requested that the Planning and Zoning Commission further evaluate a couple of key issues. One of those is whether or not ADU should be allowed as a detached or attached structure, and whether ADUs could be rented or leased, or the primary structure rented or leased. And requested, the Board of Women, Alder Women also requested at that time that the allowable maximum size of an ADU be reduced to 750 square feet from the Planning and Zoning Commission's previous recommendation of 900 square feet. Now, those specific items were reviewed by the commission and incorporated into the proposed revisions, which I will highlight when I get to the section of those standards that include those specific parts. As part of the formal amendment process to the UDC, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on June 3rd to gather input on the proposed changes to allow ADUs with those defined standards. Following review and consideration, the commission recommended approval of the proposed amendments. So the first part of the proposed amendments would add single-family residential accessory dwellings, ADUs, as part of the allowable accessory uses in R1 single families. So that would be adding H to the already list of accessory uses that are allowed. And then the following standard shall apply to all single-family residential dwelling units. And then there are a number of sub-points underneath that. So the first one is ADU definition. So the definition of accessory dwelling unit is a secondary or subordinate residential dwelling unit located on the same lot as the primary residence. It provides a self-contained housekeeping unit with its own kitchen, bathroom, and sleeping area. So an ADU is designed to be independent of the primary structure. Someone could, a family unit could live in that ADU without requiring access to the primary residence. Building permits required, subsection 2. ADUs regardless of size must file an application for a building permit and be approved prior to construction or placement. If there is no special improvement required from ADU, they would just need to file for a building permit. Subsection 3, Construction and Placement. ADU shall meet the most recently adopted International Residential Code. For units that are manufactured off-site to be placed on the property, a stamped certificate of the registered design professional shall accompany the building permit application stating that it meets or exceeds the most recent edition of the IRC adopted by the city. Some of these codes, including this one, are found elsewhere in our code. Staff has inserted some of these into this section because we wanted it to be a one-shop, one-stop shop. So if somebody wants to apply for an ADU or is interested in ADU regulations, they could find them all together in one spot. So some of it is a little bit redundant to other sections of code, so that adds to some of its length. Number four, prohibited building types. The following are prohibited from use as an ADU. A, mobile homes. B, shipping containers. Or C, temporary structures. Five talks about ADUs building separation. So an accessory dwelling unit must be detached from the primary structure and shall be located at least five feet from any structure, including the primary residential structure. So the five feet creates some separation for, for fire code, as, as well as creates that separation. So Planning and Zoning Commission did spend some additional time reviewing this section, this per your request, and they maintained the recommendation that ADUs must be detached from the primary structure. Their concern was that the attached ADUs might become too similar to a duplex. Number six, number of allowable ADUs. Only one ADU shall be allowed per principal structure, and only one ADU be allowed per lot. ADUs must be located on the same lot as, as the principal residential structure, and the principal structure must have a current certificate of occupancy. So we want to ensure that the primary structure was in fact livable and had a strict of occupancy. before an ADU could be built, or leased, or rented, or lived in. Seven, front setback. So no ADU shall be located within the required front setback, which is 25 feet from the property line, and AUD must, ADU must be set back at least five feet from the front facade of the principal structure. This gives some depth and prevents it, again, giving that duplex appearance. Subsection eight, side and rear setbacks. AUD shall not be located within 10 feet of the side and rear property lines. So current accessory structures are eight feet. So a shed is eight feet, side and rear. Planning Commission spent some time talking about this, but they felt because someone will be living in the ADU, that is more intense than a shed. So they wanted to increase that to 10 feet for side and rear. Setbacks from easements. So no ADU shall be located with any platted or recorded easement, or over any known utility. Allowable height. No ADU shall exceed the maximum height standards for the underlying district, nor exceed the height of the principal residential structure. So R1 has a maximum height of 35 feet, so that would apply, but if your principal structure is only 25 feet tall, then your ADU could only be 25 feet tall as well. Number 11, this one is, there's kind of a lot to unpack here. So this is the maximum allowable livable square footage. So the Planning and Zoning Commission has proposed some new, new language for the board to consider. So the maximum allowable livable square footage of an ADU shall not exceed the higher amount of 400 square feet or 40% of the principal structure finished square footage, and in no instance shall the maximum allowable livable square footage of an ADU exceed 900 square feet. Livable square footage does not include garages or carports attached to an ADU. Garages and carports attached to an ADU will be subject to the garage and carport section of the code, which is under 405.210A.2. Okay, so the intent of this, the Planning Commission has revised its recommendation for the maximum allowable size of an accessory dwelling unit. So instead of applying that 900 or 750 square feet, the updated proposal uses a percentage-based approach tying the size of the AUD, ADU, to the size of the primary residence. So this approach is intended to ensure that the AUD remains, ADU, remains proportionate in scale to the main home, while also maintaining livability on smaller properties and preventing the construction of accessory dwelling units that could rival or compete with the primary structure in size. So in general, the way to think about this rule would be that an ADU cannot exceed 40% of the size of the primary residence. But regardless of the size of the primary home, no accessory dwelling unit can exceed 900 square feet in total. So for example, a home, primary residence, the main home, that's 3,000 square feet, at 40%, then would be eligible to have an ADU of 1,200 square feet, right? But the Planning Commission felt that was too large, and at that point is, you know, really just a house. So they would only be allowed to go up to 900 square feet. So 900 is going to be the, the hard cap that you could not get permitted larger than. But to avoid unreasonably small accessory dwelling units for smaller homes in our community, there's a, the 40% cap would not apply to any house less than, or any ADU less than 400 square feet. So for example, if you had an 800 square foot primary residential home, the 40% cap would put you at 320 square feet. So with this code, you would still be allowed to build up to 400 square feet for an ADU. And part of the reason that they came up with this 40% and 400 is partially due to our minimum main residential structure requirements. So in the city, if you come in for a building permit, you have to, your house has to at least be 1,000 square feet. So for any new house that's built in the city, it has to be at least 1,000 square feet. So that 40% is already going to get you at 400. And then anything above that, you'd be able to add to your total ADU until you reach the point of 900 square feet. So for, by and large, for most instances, it's going to be 40% of the primary structure. In rare instances where houses less than 1,000 square feet, that 400 square feet would apply. And then once your house gets beyond 2,250 square feet, so after 2,250 square feet times .4, 40%, you're at 900. So after that, you're going to be capped at the maximum, 900. So I, hopefully that that's clear. I know it's a bit confusing. The intent of Planning Commission was to, instead of just having a static cap, was to make it a percentage, but try to put some big bookends to that, so you wouldn't have an unreasonably large accessory dwelling unit, nor would you have an unreasonably small accessory dwelling unit. Is that?
No, that makes sense.
That makes, okay.
Yeah.
I know, that, that's a... Then, the next thing is the minimum allowable square footage per habitable home. This is already in the building code, but again, we wanted to put everything in one spot. So minimum square footage for each habitable, habitable room shall not be less than 70 square feet. Those rooms are defined as spaces for living, sleeping, eating, or cooking. Bathrooms, toilets, closets, halls, storage, utility spaces are not considered habitable Architectural style and exterior building materials. So accessory dwelling units' architectural style and exterior building materials must, must match the principal structure. So if your house is brick, your ADU must be brick, stucco, stucco, board, batten, et cetera. Additional off-street parking requirements. Accessory dwelling units are required to have one additional off-street parking space subject to the requirements of our off-street parking requirements under 405.215. So if you want to have an accessory dwelling unit, you would need one additional off-street parking space than what's required by code. So right now, primary residential structure is required to have two off-street parking spaces exterior to the home. So your garage doesn't count, you've got to have two exterior off-street parking spaces. So if you want to have an ADU, you would need to have three exterior off-street parking spaces. If you already have three, then you wouldn't be required to add four. You just would need to have that third space for an ADU. Property maintenance standards. Accessory dwelling units shall meet the most recently adopted International Property Maintenance Code. Again, it's already in our code, you'd have to have property maintenance, but we just wanted to be overly clear and have everything in, in one spot. Seventeen covers, I'm sorry, 16 covers utilities. So ADUs may share utilities with the primary residential structure or establish separate utilities. That would be up to the homeowner to decide. But for the following utilities, ADUs shall have the means for separate emergency disconnects. They wouldn't necessarily have to have separately metered accounts, but they would have to have emergency disconnects, which shall be located exterior of the accessory dwelling unit and separate from the primary residential structure. So again, the ADU is supposed to be an independent living facility where you don't require access to the primary structure, so you don't want the electrical panel to be in the basement of the primary, and there's an electrical fire in the ADU. So you would have to have an electrical disconnect if you have fuel or gas, you'd have to have disconnect for that, and then the city's water would need to have a disconnect means and location approved by a city to disconnect that. Sewer and other utilities would not require emergency disconnects. allowable occupancy and use. This gets to the ability to rent or lease the primary or accessory structure. So Planning and Zoning, after reviewing this, maintained their recommendation, recommendation that accessory dwelling units or the principal structure may be rented, so long as the owner resides in either the ADU or the principal structure. So, kind of several points here. So A, the ADU or principal structure cannot be separately rented, or leased unless the property owner permanently resides in either the ADU or principal structure, and the ADU or principal structure shall not be rented for a period of less than 30 days, and ADU shall be subject to the applicable residential standards and requirements of this chapter, including Section 405.155 of the Unified Development Code. That really just ties that the ADU as an accessory use is still tied to the allowable uses in R1, right? So you couldn't build an ADU and set up a factory inside of it, right? You still have to follow allowable primary uses in, in, in ADU. So that's, that's all of them, and of all, all of the proposed additions to the code. So staff finds the proposed revisions are consistent with the intent of the Unified Development Code, promoting the orderly growth of our city, reducing unnecessary regulatory barriers, ensuring that our zoning regulations remain responsive to the involving needs of our community, as well as contemporary practices, that with our peer cities as well. In particular, the addition of accessory dwelling units supports aging in place, as well enhances key housing objectives outlined in our comprehensive plan, and fosters an approach of a more diverse housing stock, and ultimately contributes to improved housing affordability, as well as options and living in place. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Again, the potential actions for you all tonight would be to approve the ordinance as proposed, deny the, the proposed revisions via the ordinance, or direct staff to bring back an ordinance with revisions to the recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Ladies, any questions for city staff at this time?
I have a question for Pam, but that's next.
That would be next, yeah. All right, members of the public who wish to offer testimony regarding ADUs may step forward at this time. Please state your name and address for the record. I will now open the public hearing. Since there are no comments, I now close the public hearing. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action for Bill Number 2508 regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 405 of the Unified Development Code for ADUs. Now you can ask your questions.
Okay, so I'm, I'm still stuck on the attached versus detached, because looking at the minutes, it doesn't look like there was really that much further conversation about it, other than, yeah, we think it'll look like a duplex. But what was your recollection of that conversation at this meeting? Just pretty much that?
Yes, I believe that, that pretty much was it.
Okay.
That, that it's simply an addition to your home.
Right.
An add-on.
Yeah.
Rather than an ADU.
Sure.
An ADD, ADU, with them believing the intent of the ADU is a separate dwelling.
Mm-hmm. Correct. Yeah, I just, I'm just stuck on it still, because I feel like all of the other things here are set up to prevent it from being a duplex. It has to be smaller, it has to be, you know, there's so many other things, it has to be set back, there's so many other things here to prevent it from looking like a duplex and being a duplex. And of course, this is the one in a million people that it will apply to. So, you know, we're really getting into the weeds here, but this all is kind of one in a million, so I hate to like eliminate a family's option that might pop up seven years down the road, because we're scared it's going to look like a duplex, when I feel that we already have enough other, you know, stipulations here to prevent it from looking like a duplex. But that's just my opinion, I don't know why I feel so strongly about it, but I just think this is, this is going to be like once every three years, probably have someone come apply for this, and I just would hate for it to be like, oh no, like I have an adult, child with special needs, and I have the perfect lot to build a place for them, or whatever, and then it's like, we eliminated that option because we're scared it's going to look like a duplex. You know what I mean? Just my thoughts, but like, I, I also do want to respect Planning and Zoning's role, and that they've spent a lot of time on this as well, so I don't know, you know.
No, I mean, it, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was going to say, I agree with you. The only ADU that I've ever seen in my entire life and been inside is attached to the house. I've never seen one separate, I'm not saying they're not out there by any stretch of the imagination, I've just never seen one. They're more expensive, too. Like, attached should be cheaper to build than detached.
Yeah, the biggest focus during the meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Pam, was the percentage that Matt talked about.
Which, I really like that.
I really appreciated that they spent time on that, so it wouldn't look, someone with a larger lot wouldn't look like they just built a second home.
Yes, that is why it went back to the 900.
That was very impressive.
And was, wasn't, wasn't going to look like a playhouse on someone's large lot.
Big house, or vice versa.
Yeah.
So I think that the reason you didn't see very many comments about it is because there wasn't much discussion about it.
Sure.
If you ladies want to, it can go back to them with maybe more detail of what you're asking for. I don't think they really had any clear direction of, of really where to go on that. It was just brought up as it, it came up in, in our meeting, right? We, we talked about it, just not in any great detail.
I mean, and I, I hate to keep dragging this out and send it back to them again, where it's like, it's just a difference of opinion. They think it will look like a duplex, I don't, and then at some point, we all just have to vote based on that, you know what I mean? Like...
I don't think it's strictly the duplex. I do think that it's, how do you not say you're just adding on to your home?
Right. But, I mean, does that matter?
So one of the comments, not this past meeting, but the meeting before, was that they felt like that you could just get the permit for it, you could add on to the side of your house, then, then you could later, you know, seal that up, and then you just have an addition instead of an ADU.
Right.
Isn't it just a building permit?
I mean, what's going to happen?
You have to get a building permit regardless, there's no special ADU permit, right? Is there?
Correct, and it's the same setbacks, right? Yeah.
So... Correct, they were just saying, it, it defeats the purpose of what an ADU is supposed to be. It's supposed to be another, another, you know, another family or another person could live in it. And so they're saying, someone could just add on to their house.
But they could do that now without the ADU.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct, yes.
So I don't want to, I guess I don't understand what the fear is there, because it's like, if they file for an ADU and then they retroactively just make it an addition, they wasted a bunch of money on that, when they could have just filed for the addition in the first place, but from a city perspective, it's still the same, right? Unless I'm missing something with the code that's different between the two, which is possible, but...
No. Correct? Are we missing something?
No, I think that some of the comments from Planning Commission was that you could add on to your home, you could finish your basement, right? So if you had a kid, or you had a parent that wanted to come live with you, you could just do an addition to your home, and that would suffice, that would fill that need. The ADU portion of it, I think their concern was that, while the 40% would certainly help, it could then start to look like, you know, if you built a, you know, 2,000 square foot house, and then next to it, you attach on a 750 square foot ADU, both front doors facing the street, that that sort of looks like a duplex. And I think the difference here, which I think is kind of difficult to imagine, is what's the purpose of an ADU versus expanding your home, right? So a single-family home, by our code definition, is supposed to be for a, a family, right? For one family unit that has access to the full home, so there's not, you don't have to go outside, the, the house is accessible, surrounded by an empty lot, right? Otherwise, you become a single-family either attached or duplex. So, single-family attached homes are allowed by our code, but only in R2. So I think their, their concern is that R1 is single, is intended for single-family detached. Whereas if you then start allowing single-family attached homes, you're now kind of getting into what's allowable in R2 versus R1.
Exactly.
The two front doors, I forgot about that.
Right, yeah. I agree, that, it was discussed. You know, I can't tell you if it was the last meeting or the prior meeting, because they were so long, and both of them, and, but I think, you know, they were concerned about the, the neighborhood. You know, if you're in an R1 neighborhood, and a home basically gets an extra 40% put on to it.
Correct.
With another front door, what does that make the rest of the, how are the rest of the neighbors going to feel about that?
Yeah, I guess my, like, question would be, how is it, if it's detached from the house by five feet?
That's what I was just hearing, saying, it's like this far.
You know?
That bush.
You know what I mean? Like, if they're just, it's still like visually, if you're driving by, you may not even notice that if they're attached or detached, you know what I mean? And then it's like, then I could see them being like, well, then they can rent the unit out, but that's true of the detached also, you know? So, I, I see where they're coming from, I just think we're putting up a wall that is, doesn't have to be there, because of all of the other stipulations that are here, too. But again, this just may be a thing where we just kind of all have different views on it, and we just have to vote accordingly, you know? And that's okay, but I just wanted to mention it and kind of bring it up again, because I know you guys were focused on the nuance with the square footage and stuff, so, but I don't know that it's worth sending it back down again, when it's like, you guys have discussed it extensively in the past meeting, so...
Well, it's, as Matt stated when he was done with the report, that is what you ladies can do tonight. You can either approve it, or deny it, or you can send it back to Planning and Zoning.
Does anyone else, I, I don't want to be like the bad guy, like, I mean, I guess...
I see both, I see both ways. It's hard, it's tricky, but it's also the one in a million, you know, the one out.
In both cases, it's like the one in a million.
Yes, it's just we want to make the right choice for future people who may want, need it attached, but I get it looking like a duplex if there's two, or...
So it's kind of hard.
And making the gray between R1 and R2, like, I understand that, too, but...
Scott has a comment.
This is just kind of ironic, so my wife's a nurse, and she had a bunch of nurses over for the weekend, and this conversation came up, but through healthcare. And what they mentioned is they disliked the attached, because they can't often find how to get into the facility to... how to get into the facility to the person to treat, that's, and when it's detached, it's easier for them to access the facility, go directly to the person. And so, they were just having to talk about it because there was a person that had one that they had to go through a garage, up a flight of stairs, and then there was the living quarters for the person that was in hospice care.
That's actually a really good point, because the one that I know of that is attached is attached by a breezeway. Though they have a front door, but it's on the backside of their house.
Yes.
And if you didn't know it was there, you would have no idea that it was a whole other house.
And I just overheard the conversation, and it's ironic that here we are.
But also, like, then in that case, five feet is what, like, I mean, that's like
I threw out five feet, is that the number?
That's the number.
Is it the number?
Well, the number was due to fire code, and I, now, what I thought the fire code said was it was more than five feet, but, anyway, five, that's where
It has to be at least five feet.
That is the number, okay.
Five feet was a fire code, so trying to fit the 10-foot set, or side setback, and, you know, it fit everything in and still allows someone to build it, led to allowing it to only be five feet from
Got it.
The principal structure.
Does the door of the ADU have to be facing the same way as the door of the primary structure, or could there be a rule that has to be on the side or the back?
You mean if it's attached?
Yeah, or
It's not in there, it's not in there because they're not allowing attached, but I guess that's a whole nother conversation to have of, so then we're talking two different things. So, if both the doors face the front, then we're having the duplex fear, or if they don't, then we're having the access fear.
Correct.
And I guess I'm just kind of of the mindset where, obviously, we want this to be a positive thing for the community when it happens, but I feel like the point of this is to empower homeowners to use their houses to meet their family's needs as our economy changes and healthcare changes and stuff. And the more, like, nitpicky we get about some of these, like, possible fears that could potentially happen, the more we restrict people from using it
Right.
When the time comes. But I, totally valid point, you know, it's all valid points, like.
So I'm hearing that the majority wants to send it back, so if that's true, then you just need to direct city staff of, just a list of some things that you would like for Planning and Zoning to discuss in that meeting. Please speak up.
I don't know that I necessarily want to send it back.
I don't want to send it back, so.
Okay, okay. I was just, I was hearing that, but I'm just trying to get conversation going of which way.
I think, I don't want to send it back because I think they've had enough ample time to, like, voice their opinions, and so I don't want to waste their time in sending it back, and we're like, no, we still think it looks like a duplex, like, you know what I mean? I just, I'm just going to have to vote how I feel on it as it's presented, but I'm okay, like, it just, that's, you know, but I also don't want to waste their time again when they obviously have made it clear where they stand.
And they can make changes to it also from here, yeah. So, you, you don't have to send it back, you guys can amend a portion of it however you like at this time, and it doesn't have to go back.
Yeah, and if you change the ordinance, it can't be approved tonight, but you could direct us to change the ordinance and bring it back to the next meeting.
It wouldn't have to go back to them, it can come back to you with the amendments of what you direct city staff to.
Yeah, I mean.
We just haven't done that, but that's what I'm processing and thank you for helping me with that.
I mean, that would be my inclination, is to amend it to allow attached, and then let city staff further discuss if we need to dictate door placement so that it's accessible to emergency personnel, or doesn't look like a duplex or whatever, but that's just me. I mean, I don't, I don't want to dominate the conversation, and like, I want to hear what you guys think, too.
Just allowing detached doesn't mean that, or, I'm sorry, allowing it to be attached doesn't mean that, like, they can still detach it if they want to, right?
Yeah.
Like, we're not, we're actually opening up the opportunity instead of making it a hard line, it has to be detached, like, now you can either attach it or detach it at your
Well, I think it would be a good idea to, just as, I mean, Matt has done very well with the bullet points and details of each thing so that no one can get confused, it would be nice to have it very clear if it was attached, then
Here's the difference.
Here's the differences that you do if it's attached. The door can't be on the front, it would have to be somewhere else. A facade has to match exactly, things like that, so it doesn't, it doesn't look like just a add-on of
Right.
Completely different, you know, materials.
Yeah.
That's just my thoughts.
Yeah.
So, if you want to move in this direction, then what are your expectations regarding utilities and everything else that's been put into it? Because all of that needs to be readdressed.
I think it's the same.
I think it's the same.
It's just, you're just literally attaching off the wall.
Well, yeah, outside.
Yes.
Yes, still outside, so it can be obtained by EMS or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. I also think it's, if we go this path, I think if we could talk about, if it's attached, it requiring a little bit bigger setback than five feet from the front of the structure, if that helps alleviate the duplex fears a little bit, you know, because if the house is, let's say the house is 20 feet deep, and the duplex, or the, whatever, the attached ADU could be a 10-foot setback, so then it's half back the distance, and then so even if the back of the detached hangs back further than the primary home, but it looks, you know what I mean? If that helps alleviate that, I think we could have a different stipulation on that if it's attached versus detached. I just, I just hate to draw a line in the sand over that when it feels like the reasons why are kind of like abstract what-ifs that we could address with other stipulations on it, in my opinion.
So if you're, if you guys are going that way, what I have so far is to review utilities with attached, so this is with attached, review utilities, the setback requirements, and the door either on the side or the back of the attached unit. Like, get everything?
I mean, I, so, yeah, I don't feel that strongly about the door, because Scott's pointing his ballot to there, because then it's like it's harder to find if it's on the side or the back. I think the door was not being on the front pleases the duplex crowd, but then it doesn't please the healthcare crowd, so
Sure.
You know what I mean? I don't know. I would be inclined just to leave that up to the homeowner, probably, unless, but, unless one of you guys has a stronger opinion about it.
I think if it's set further back, I mean, it's not going to look like a duplex, in my opinion. I mean, any duplex you see, they're in a line, they're not like shifted like this, so. And I get accessory dwelling, people are thinking that that has to be a separate thing, but I don't think it has to be, like to Rachel's point of people with special needs or somebody that still needs it to be close to the main, you know, we don't know everybody's situation and what could come up, so I don't want to restrict it either.
Yeah, and I'm just more worried about the math problem of like the size of lots and stuff, so if it has to be detached and it has to be five feet from the house, then it's like that just eliminates another crowd from doing it.
But you do the same thing by moving it from five feet to 10 feet, so.
Back, yeah, but our, I feel like, I feel like there's more wiggle room with our rear-to-back setbacks versus the side setbacks we've kept pretty tight. What I mean, you know what I mean? But, yeah.
Well, I mean, everything has to be, because it had a 10-foot side, which really put it behind most houses, didn't it, Matt? I mean, because we already have a 10-foot side setback, so, so, so you're talking about all of that has to be rewritten as well, which is fine.
Why?
I'm just, because we have a 10, we have a 10-foot side setback, or side for a house
Right.
And then we had a 10-foot, then we have a 10-foot side setback for the ADU.
Correct, yeah, to match the 10-foot, so you couldn't, ADU couldn't extend into the required side setback, but an ADU could extend into the required rear setback. So the primary structure has to be 25 feet from the rear property line, but the proposed code allowed an ADU to go up to 10 feet to the rear property line, so.
To the rear.
Yeah, to the rear. So this, you would have to have a large enough lot
Right.
But you have room on the side to attach an ADU.
And then still have the 10
It still has the 10 feet, yeah. You still have to be 10 feet from the side.
Yeah.
So.
So I think you could
It's the one person out of, you know, 8,000 that has the lot for it, you know?
Yeah, I think you could make it an option of what, what you ladies are talking about, you would just, it would just have to be specified in there exactly for the setbacks.
Right, and, I mean, so the front setback, right now reads, no, ADU should be located within the required front setback, and should be five feet behind the front facade of the principal structure, but that could be separated to be five feet for detached and 10 for attached, and that could be adjusted there. One consideration would be on the allowable livable square footage, because right now that 40% is based on the primary structure. So say you had a 2,000 square foot house, but you were going to convert 400 of those square feet to your ADU, well, now your primary structure is only 1,600 square feet, so would that 40% apply to your primary structure before or after the ADU is sort of cannibalized part of that, right? So.
So he's saying like, well, like, if you have a split level, or like a raised ranch where you have the door to the basement on the bottom, and then you divided it in half and made the basement an ADU, that's an attached ADU, that's one scenario that he's saying, so then that would take away from the initial square footage of the home.
But if it's built onto it, okay.
So he's saying like repurposing the existing structure.
I was
Yeah, like if you had a bedroom that was on the side of your house, and you decided to close that door off and put in some firewall for fire separation, and then take that room and then incorporate that into your new attached ADU, you've now reduced the size of your principal structure.
Right.
So, that'd be one thing to consider, we'd have to maybe look at some language on that just to be clear.
I think more people would go for that.
I think the other portions of the code probably are okay. I think if the board would, the majority of the board wants to change the proposed ordinance, then it might be best to do that via a motion.
Yes.
So somebody would make a motion to have staff amend the proposed ordinance with dot, 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 and bring back.
Perfect. So I either need a motion for amending, or a motion to approve or deny.
Tracy, how are you feeling?
I agree with you. I think dividing more people out of it is an awful idea. I think we're trying to make it better for the community, and weaving one scenario out of any is not our intent, so, okay, okay.
I was trying to find it, but we had previously talked about it as an example from another city, where that city did have, if your ADU was attached, then the door had to have a different front facade angle. So if, you know, your door was facing the street, the other one had to be angled offwards or something like that to prevent two front doors from being right in line, but they didn't have the 10-foot
And I was just about to say that, so.
So I think that might change that. I think that code was really, there was no required front setback difference in that city's example, so their, their two front doors really could have been right next to each other, so they did make it, so it had to be turned, but.
I was just going to ask that, so, in this hypothetical scenario of a raised ranch with a basement that someone wants to convert into an ADU down there, then there's no set, the doors are flush, it's the same structure, so that still wouldn't fly even with the five-foot rule, right?
That's pretty much just a finished basement.
Yeah, which they can probably do, I mean
Correct.
You don't even really need an ADU permit to do that.
No, you do not.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, I would like to make a motion to amend the ordinance to allow attached ADUs with the city staff looking into utilities and setbacks, and if the attached structures have a different door setback than detached.
I'll second.
Is that a good motion?
What are you thinking about? Because I can tell you're really thinking.
Well, it
You're squinting.
Any, any more specifics on the setback of the
You need us to tell you what we want and not just direct you to research.
Yeah, well, because we can make the code work, but it's really what you all want in, to see in the code. And the other thing that, to think about is, if somebody simply renovates their existing house to add an ADU, so if they have a detached garage, for instance, and that detached garage is the same front facade plane as their current house, but they want to convert that attic space into a ADU, or if they want to convert, say they have a six-bedroom house, and they want to attach a kitchen to one wing of their house and separate two of those bedrooms to now be part of an ADU, well, now that ADU isn't 10 feet behind the principal structure because it was part of it to begin with.
Mm-hmm, or five feet even. I mean, five and 10, it's kind of the same, you run into the same issue.
Right.
But then, I don't know if we can take the five out, because then it's the duplex issue.
Yeah.
Unless we said that if the five-feet setback, or the ADU door has to be on a different side of the house than the front door, because then it addresses either scenario and would allow people to stay within the structure of their home if they wanted to.
Mm-hmm.
Does that sound too complicated?
No.
But what, you just explained, what's the difference in that and someone just doing a remodel and adding on to their house?
Well, that would just be, that would just be building a permit down on their house, right?
That'd be different.
It's kind of, what's the point of an ADU, right? Which is that it's a completely separate and independent, so.
With a kitchen and things like that, right.
And rooms aren't connected.
Correct.
Maybe the walls attached, it's kind of like a duplex, right? Yes, it's built together, but you're completely separate from the other neighbor, you can't go into their kitchen, vice versa, without going to the front door knocking, right?
Right.
So, the idea that, yeah, you could expand on to your house to have more family over, or you could, you know, have your in-law suite in the basement or whatever else, but that isn't really the intent of an ADU, which is a totally separate, independent living structure. Right? So now if you've attached it, you are not necessarily an attached, single-family home, because in this code, it's going to be accessory dwelling unit, not a, not a separate home. So I guess then the question is, yeah, how do you, in the specifics of, and it's subjective, right, which is why it's kind of tough for me to say, well, we can just write up the code, is what is that difference between an attached home versus an attached accessory dwelling unit?
There wouldn't be.
Well, it has their own utilities, has to have their own kitchen and their own exterior entrance, and not have an interior access to the main home, right? Aren't those all big?
Right.
You can do all of that.
And still be attached.
Then it's like just by redoing a couple of rooms in your house.
Right, so, I mean, anyone can do that already.
Right.
I don't understand.
It wouldn't be, it's like Matt's saying, what's the difference? Maybe, maybe we should keep the ADU code as, as proposed, and then possibly look at the code for when someone remodels or wants to add on.
Yeah, and I'm
That, these, these items could be in that code.
I'm sorry, I kind of jumped in, I know
No, you're fine.
Yeah.
You made a motion, and somebody seconded it, then it should be
We're in discussion right now.
Yeah.
Yes.
So if someone does remodel or want to remodel their basement, and then they do later want it, so they get just a building permit, right, to do that, to add on to their basement, then later on, something happens with a family member or something, and they want to move them in, they want them to have their own utilities and stuff, then if they go to do, have their own utilities or have their own water, do they have to have a permit to do that? Or anybody can do that? Sorry, I don't know how that
Yeah, they would need, they would need a permit now to do that, but they would, currently you would not be permitted to do that because you would now be creating a duplex or a single-family attached structure. So, that would not be allowed in, in R1.
Because we don't have
So like, I mean, you might, you probably see this in like older areas of Kansas City or some, you know, sort of neighborhoods, where there's a single-family home, it maybe is quite large, you know, 4,000, 5,000 square feet, the city will rezone that from R1 to maybe R2, and then somebody goes and purchases that house, and you enter the initial doorway, now there's two doors, and it's turned into a duplex, right? So they've created that as a duplex, but that's because it would be in a zoning district that would allow for that. So right now, our code wouldn't allow for you to separate out a single-family home in any manner that would then create a duplex or multiple independent living facilities.
In the original structure. So I feel like we kind of went down that rabbit trail of like refinishing the original structure, but I still think the same points stand on an attached addition off the side or the back, that I still think people, so if we kind of abandon, and we can all agree, in the main structure, they may not be able to qualify for the ADU because of the setback for the door, but they can do everything except for have separate utilities already, by the way code allows, basically.
Correct.
It's just the separate utilities.
So if we kind of abandon that bucket of people and say, well, they can do everything except have separate utilities, that should work for most people, then we can keep the door setbacks and still allow attached, thinking like, if it's a ranch, it would become like an L, and then there's a sidewalk around back to the door for the unit that's attached on the back, or if they have a really wide lot, they can add one to the side that's 40% or smaller and setback by 10 feet if it's attached, or 5 feet if it's detached. So I still think that, in my opinion, I still think attached, we shouldn't just banish it, but understanding that if we keep the door setbacks, we lose the bucket of people that want to reuse a portion of their house, but they really can do that already.
Right.
Except for the utility thing, which I don't think is, I would imagine in most cases, not a big deal, if it's typically going to be, you're going to be doing this for family anyways, right?
Yeah, if you're attaching it, you typically are doing it for long-term family or something.
So in which case, my motion was...
So say your motion again, please.
My motion was to amend the ordinance to allow for attached ADUs with a 5-foot setback from the front of the primary structure for attached, sorry, 10-foot for attached, 5-foot for detached. Do we need, and then do we need to add in that, to have the city look into utilities to see if that is an added difficulty, or I think it's the same thing, basically, right? Whether it's attached or detached, you can still...
Yeah, we just need to add that, so utilities, and then what about the front door?
I think we leave, in my opinion, I think we leave it, because if we're saying they have to be setback 10 feet, I think we leave it up to them if the door faces, because then we, I think the 10-foot setback eliminates the duplex look, but unless someone else...
I don't know if you're, if you're living in that neighborhood, if you're going to feel that way.
Why?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think visually, the 5 feet back, or the 10 feet back, visually looks like a...
It's going to look like a duplex. Yeah.
Okay.
You're going to have to put the door on the side or the back.
Okay, I'm fine. So, and then if you're attached, the door has to be on a different side of the home than the primary residence's front door?
Okay. I wrote it down, so I can say it back if someone seconds it.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to amend the ADU proposed ordinance to add attached dwelling with a 10-foot setback for attached, 5-foot for detached, with looking into utilities, and attached would have, would not have the door on the front of the house. Did I get that right?
That sounded right.
All right, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible action for bill number 2509 regarding an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative agreement between the city of Oak Grove and Lafayette County Collector of Revenue relating to taxes. Kim?
Yes. We were recently contacted by Lafayette County Collector of Revenue regarding this agreement for Lafayette County, like the city taxes, along with the, and other jurisdictional taxes.
Oh, sorry. Currently, the city receives the tax bills from Lafayette County, and then we mail them out to the residents that are within the city limits of Oak Grove that are in Lafayette County, or the mortgage companies, and then the residents pay that city tax here at City Hall, and then they pay their county taxes at Lafayette County, along with their other jurisdictional taxes, like the school and fire districts. So this agreement would just like streamline that process, eliminating duplicate handling of the tax bills, the need for residents to issue multiple checks, like to City Hall and to the county, when they can just pay the county, and then the county would pay us monthly for the receipts of the city taxes that they have. There are about 100 tax bills that are generated for approximately 50 homes in Lafayette County within the city limits of Oak Grove, and by agreeing with this agreement, by going through with this agreement, it would save us probably four hours or so of processing time of the bills when we receive them, and additional postage to mail them out to the residents, and just kind of simplify that payment processing. Lafayette County, like I said, would then issue us a check each month for the monies that are collected for the city of Oak Grove. Have I answered your questions?
No.
Minus 3%.
Clarify.
Like they're going to keep 3%?
3% of the total collected, and I just ran a rough tape on last year, it's about $450.
Does that basically break even with postage and time and all that, or...
Yeah, I would say it's very close, very close, because we receive phone calls from mortgage companies to verify the payment, and if it's been paid, or different things that arise, where you have to look up the tax bill and just confirm that it has been paid.
So they reached out to us?
Yes, we're, I guess we're one of the few cities that they don't collect for, and the collector was kind of unsure of why that was, but we kind of guessed that as the homes were being built in Green, Green Oaks, that there was just 1, 5, 7, so it was like, oh, we'll just go ahead and send those bills out, you know? I don't, it wasn't like 50 homes were built immediately, you know, I think it was just a small progression, and so they sent us the bills and we collected it. Now there's over 100 homes, and there are other phases that could be opening up there.
And when they called you, did you ask them why they can't start collecting it now?
They would collect this in, when the bills go out in November.
Okay.
So they're due December 31st, so this, this agreement would go into place where they would, it would be effective this year.
Right. The benefits of living on the county lines.
Yes, yeah. I think more, it's, I think it's a benefit to the residents.
Yes.
Just not having to write out two separate checks, not having to come into City Hall to make that tax payment.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, a lot of people come into City Hall and make their tax payment, they can't do that online for the city, you know what I mean?
Like, they can't do that online?
Lafayette County is.
No, not Lafayette.
Their county tax.
I like that it's saving you time and postage. Is it four hours every month?
No.
I don't think it's really saving anything, I think it's just a wash.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, it pretty much is a wash, but the benefit would be to the resident.
To the resident.
Yes.
More so than...
Very good. Anything else? All right, this is an ordinance.
I move for first and second reading by title only of bill number 25-09.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the first and second reading of the proposed ordinance by title only. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. City clerk, would you please read the full title of the bill two times?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative agreement between the city of Oak Grove, Missouri, and the Lafayette County Collector of Revenue relating to collection of taxes and special assessments. An, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative agreement between the city of Oak Grove, Missouri, and the Lafayette County Collector of Revenue relating to collection of taxes and special assessments.
I move for adoption of bill number 25-09.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of bill number 2509 to ordinance. Any discussion? If not, city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Rachel Kilmer?
Yes.
Tracy Newcomer?
Yes.
Pam Pope?
Yes.
Ciara McMichael?
Yes.
And Kelly Netto?
Yes.
The motion is approved, and ordinance number 2136 is adopted. The next item on the agenda is information reports. Mr. Randall?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Any report? No report? Chief?
No report, thank you, ma'am.
Cory?
Just an update on White Oaks Pump Station from the last meeting. The holdup right now, we're waiting on the pumps, the physical pumps to come in, they're expected to be in the third week of July, and then once they're in, we can schedule for installation, and they're still estimating a two-week install.
Thank you, Cory. Kim?
Just one note, since the ordinance prior to this didn't pass, that ordinance number would be 2135.
Excuse me, do we need to do anything? Okay, all right, start with the title only? Yeah, okay. City clerk, would you please read the full title of the bill two times?
An, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative agreement between the city of Oak Grove, Missouri, and the Lafayette County Collector of Revenue relating to collection of taxes and special assessments. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative agreement between the city of Oak Grove, Missouri, and the Lafayette County Collector of Revenue related to collection of taxes and special assessments.
So I need a motion now.
I move for adoption of bill number 25-09.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of bill number 2509 to ordinance. Any discussion? If not, city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Rachel Kilmer?
Yes.
Tracy Newcomer?
Yes.
Pam Pope?
Yes.
Ciara McMichael?
Yes.
Kelly Netto?
Yes.
The motion is approved, and ordinance number 2135 is adopted.
Correct.
Sorry about that, Kim.
That's okay.
Tina? Scott?
Yeah, it's hard to believe that 4th of July is fast approaching, and our celebration for Sparks and Stripes is July 3rd, if you remember, and we will close the park around 4:00 PM, activities start at 6:00. So we'll clear the park from 4:00 to 6:00, get ready for the, everyone to show up at 6:00, and then should be a good event, hopefully we get good weather. Then on the following day, the 4th, the pool will operate on normal hours, and they'll close at 6:00.
Thank you, Scott. Rachel?
No report.
Kelly?
Well, now I have three questions, three things. One, do we know that the water fountain at the basketball court, pickleball court over in Webb Park with the dog water bowl is not working?
I did not, thank you.
Yeah, can we look into that?
Yes.
My poor babies, they were so thirsty when they go. I've just meaning, meaning to tell you, and I totally forgot till now. Second question, the hour 4th of July celebration, is it from here on out until, bar anything else happening, do we intend to keep it on July 3rd consistently?
Yes, that was the last time we talked, yeah.
Good, okay, perfect, I thought, so I wanted to verify. And lastly, you said the park closes at 4:00?
So we clear the park at 4:00, like the aquatic center closes at 4:00, so we start getting people out, the food trucks, Cub Scouts come in, we have the Boy Scouts, excuse me, come in, and we start planning for the parking, the police begin setting up, so there's kind of that traffic comes in. We used to have gates, and we'd say gates open at 6:00.
Yeah.
We, I think even last year said gates open at 6:00, but there's no gates, so... There's not like we're, I mean, we'll accommodate if someone comes out, but it's, the idea is to get people out, so we can get things ready.
Yeah, okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Pam?
No report.
Tracy?
No report.
Ciara?
I do have a report, guys. Today I have to resign from my position as alderwoman Ward 1. I have recently purchased a home outside of Oak Grove, so I'm no longer eligible to serve in this role. I have loved serving this community that's been my home since I was three years old, and I accepted this role out of a desire to get back to the town that helped shape me, but also to learn more about how local government is run, and I can happily say that I was able to do both of those things in my short time here, but thank you for the opportunity to serve alongside these amazing women making history, as well as an amazing staff, I've loved working with you, and I look forward to seeing all the great things that lie ahead for our community, so, sorry.
Congratulations. No sorries, no sorries.
Yeah, so I'm very proud of you that you stepped out, and, you know, you ran, and then you enjoyed it so much that you ran again, so very proud of you. So tonight, one of our things that we're recognizing is you, and you are here to show up for it, so come down.
Aw, yay!
All right, Ciara, we have a proclamation for you. Yeah. All right, you ready for all the whereas's?
Yeah.
First off, give you this coin, so this is a service coin for your service and everything you've done, and as I said, I'm just so proud of you, I'm going to miss you, and I know all the other ladies will too, you've dived right in and served, and you've done very well, but I am excited for your next job. You're welcome. All right.
Ready for your whereas's?
Yeah. Whereas, we wish to express sincere appreciation to Ciara McMichael for her service and dedication as a member of the Oak Grove Board of Alderwomen. Whereas, Ciara has been a resident of Oak Grove for over 29 years, and was elected to her seat as Alderwoman of Ward 1 on April 2024, and whereas, the April 2024 election resulted in historical first all-female Board of Alderwomen led by a female mayor in the history of the city of Oak Grove, Jackson County, and first recorded in the state of Missouri. And whereas, Ciara has the honor of representing her hometown, and has proved herself to be valuable asset to the citizens of her ward and the city of Oak Grove, working constantly for the betterment of the community. Whereas, she has displayed core values, integrity, honesty, and impartiality, as well as openness to learn and the desire to help others. Now, I, Dana R. Webb, and the Board of Alderwomen present this proclamation to you, and thank you for your service. Can you take a picture with me? You got to pull that up.
Yeah.
All right.
Dana can hook you up there, I think.
Yeah, at least it's not Odessa or Grand Valley, right?
Right, you're a treacherous... All right, typically, my report is not going back down on the floor giving a proclamation, but that was special. I once again would like to thank city staff for working through all of the R1 requirements, and also planning and zoning, and so at our next meeting moving forward, and once these both get approved, we're going to recognize our planning and zoning, have them come to a meeting, they've spent countless hours, but I'm really proud of you ladies for going through the process, and then now, once again, looking at it again and thinking of your constituents. That's all I have, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. You can have it.
There you go, you got your last one.
I wanted to say it.
Ciara McMichael made a motion to adjourn. Yep, and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.